Have prayer by Commissioner.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for another day that you blessed us with. We thank you for our county and all of our employees and for Sheriff's Department EMS and all the people that run our county. We just thank you for them. Pray for their safeties again through the weeks. And we just pray for our men and women that's fighting for the freedom that we might stand here tonight and meet openly and salute our flag and pray to you. Just be with this meeting. We might make the best decision for Henry County and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is how we're gonna have a roll call.
This is the regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, August 28, 2018 at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers in LaBelle, Florida. In attendance are Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Lapp, and Clerk Barbara Buck.
The move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Ms. Chairman, Chairwoman, I would just ask that we pull item C1, the sale of 1,500 Academy for discussion.
That's what I wanted to pull. Okay.
Make the motion and pull C.
I'll second that.
C1.
C1.
Okay. County Administrator, for C1, am I right?
County Attorney, yes ma'am.
We're gonna discuss it now.
You wanna vote on the balance and then...
Your discretion, Madam Chair. You could vote on the balance of the consent agenda except for C1, or we could pick up the discussion on C1 at this time.
Let's vote on it. I believe that it was recommended by who? To go ahead on the accepted. Commissioner Harrison and Commissioner Carson Turner.
Swindle.
Swindle. I vote that we accept it.
All those in favor, by sign of...
Those in favor of the motion.
All those in favor by motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We vote that we accept it. At this time, we're gonna turn over to Attorney.
Do you have a question in particular?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chair, my question was, do we want to sell at that number? I feel that that's below median market. I know that it's been on the market for quite some time, but I think with some of the turning in the economy, if you will, the county's not losing anything by continuing to hold on to it. And I would just ask for another 60 days, at least, of leaving it on the market. I was not aware that it was on the market. I apologize for my own ignorance there, but I think that that's a potential golden spot for future development to occur in the Harlem community.
It's been on the market for two years now.
Yes, ma'am.
To my understanding. That is a low price. I did bring it to their attention, and I would like also to see it stay on the market just for a little while longer. We are growing and the lots out there are selling, but I think we should, you know, we could do it just a little bit better.
I agree. Alright, well then I would ask, I would make it in the form of a motion that we reject the offer submitted to the county and leave it on the market 60 days time certain, or do we want to go longer than that?
Well, just to be clear, do you want to...
Relist it.
Well, it already is. We would have to extend our listing agreement with sugar reality because it is due to expire before...
Let me ask you another question, just for clarification. Ms. Byrd, where is this lot? Is this the one that's just, it's on the same side as where Pete cuts everybody's hair? It's across the street from the Granvilles?
I think it's on the same side.
Okay, it's the same side as where everybody...
I knew that it was on the same side.
The two-story house is just east of it? Just to the...
It's east of it.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
I'm trying to think. It's east of it.
Yep. The grass is a little high there right now and there's a service pole on it, right?
I don't think the grass. I can't put the code enforcement out like that, but I think...
Well, it was just a little while ago, so...
But it is to east of it, and I do think that we need to just hold off a little bit.
Okay.
The lots are selling pretty good out there, if anybody paid attention, and I would like to just give it a little more time.
Yeah.
What about, it is listed for sale for $3,150. That's the asking price that's in the current listing agreement. Would the board's direction be...
It's $3,500.
$3,500 says anything.
Well, why? If somebody's listening, why isn't there a sign of...
It's $3,500 anything.
It was reduced to $31.
It was, but then it was reduced in the most recent listing agreement on March 13th. It was reduced to $3,150 as the asking price. And so, what I'm asking you is...
$3,500.
That's our asking price. And so if someone wants to offer $3,150, well then you'll take that up, but unless they want to bring that offer forward, we're not bringing it anything to you less than that.
There you go. Cool.
I want to put it in a motion.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
We move that in the form of a motion that we take $3,500 with a motion moved by Carson Turner and...
$3,150.
$3,150 or $3,500?
$3,150 is the current asking price.
With $3,150, seconded by Commissioner Turner.
Let me...
Mike Swindle. Okay, so the next thing on the...
What, long did it go?
Got a vote on it?
Don't. I thought we did vote on it, but everyone agree?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Okay. And you know what? You can be patient with me today. Okay, next is the award and appearance. There's none, so we're gonna move on to public hearing. This is a public, am I right? This is a public hearing at this time. If anyone from the public would like to speak, let's hit you. Fill out a card.
Mrs. Chair, I make a motion to approve option number one, approve the withdrawal.
I like it.
Okay. Everybody agree?
Public hearing.
Yeah, I said that this is a public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak, that's some old, them old.
Oh, their own. Oh, okay.
It was here when we got here.
You got anything to say, Margaret?
I don't. I'm looking forward to your vote.
Okay.
Don't go any closer.
Anyone have any comments? This is a public hearing. In the motion, everyone agree?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody don't? Okay.
It passed, Miss...
Good job, Margaret. We're gonna move on to the...
She left happy, I think.
Consent. We did consent, so we're gonna move on to the FYI.
We're all with the staff.
No.
You don't have to do anything on FYI?
This time, Shane?
No, you don't have to, FYI, he doesn't do anything. Just skip on to...
It's got a staff.
At this time, we're moving on to staff report. At this time, Charles?
Yes, ma'am. The item before you is to whether or not to...
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead, approve option one to accept the grant from FDEP.
I'll second the motion.
Want to agree?
Aye.
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 Anybody don't? We're gonna move on. Wait, this time we accept that in the motion to accept the grant. At this time, we're gonna go on to Attorney Mark Lapp.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is the initial assessment resolution for the additional properties that would be subject to mosquito control assessment.
Madam Chair, Mr. Lapp, I don't know if this is gonna be too much to ask, but I know I may help lead this movement a little bit. Irrelevant if I did or not. But Shane, like, I think now this is gonna take in, for example, I think it's gonna take in Tripp Witten's house off of 835, if I look at one of these maps correctly, or 833. Go south of the juice plant, take a right on that little itty-bitty bridge. Am I understanding that map correctly, or am I wrong?
I don't know if it's a little bit of bridge, but a little area.
Well, here's what I'm saying. They're crazy if they're telling us they're gonna... What are they gonna do with the Innataff Boulevard?
Innataff Boulevard, there's a couple homes right there.
So they're gonna go down by Mr. Cotton's and they're gonna drive down that moral road and turn around?
Do that. At Innataff, hit those homes and include that in that aerial spray block when they spray, is what they would do.
And so that's gonna cost them how much more money a year? 30 bucks?
Uh, so much per house, and it's like, let me have a second here.
Isn't it $30, Mark?
I think it's 30 bucks.
30 for a lot.
It's 30 per, well, it's a large tract, so it would be 30 for the house and a dollar per acre, but it's a max at $100, so...
But are you, y'all gonna spray the whole acre?
When we do the area.
The house?
No, they're only gonna spray the acres when they do aerial treatment.
But then he has to pay for the house.
But, but what month are we in? August 28th. How many times have we had aerial treatment in 2018?
We had one. We haven't had the need to.
Council been low.
Council been low.
Yeah, it's been a good year.
Yeah. Okay.
Say...
Go ahead.
Mark, did we have sent out notices to everybody in that district?
Everybody who is slated for an increase got in their trim notice a letter that should have arrived a day or two. When did they arrive?
A couple of days ago.
Days ago. They should have gotten it in their trim notice. Everyone who's in one of these black areas...
So they didn't get it like a separate mail?
No, it was folded up in the trim notice.
Okay, but it was a letter.
It was a letter.
Okay.
How much more is this generated a year?
$12,586 for all these parcels. And it fills in some holes in Port LaBelle where we have, where no one's being treated by the HOA or by the Port LaBelle CDD, and people are complaining about mosquitoes, so we filled those in. Few blocks, Wheeler Road, we sprayed them before and they're not being assessed.
Spring View in there.
Is that Country Oaks Village?
That's Spring View.
That's HOA 4, right?
Yeah.
No, it's not included because...
Spring View's not HOA 4.
It's not in here yet either.
It's where Spring View at.
Laurel Oaks.
No, Laurel Oaks is not included in this.
Why?
Okay.
The residents were still debating whether they wanted to do it, and I need to meet with that, I need to meet with that HOA to talk about it.
You got Laurel Oaks and you got Spring View, and right now they didn't, they didn't want to pay $30.
It's in the same area?
It's on the north side of 80. There were some residents, they were inquiring about it. They wanted to do it, didn't want to do it, and I'd like to meet with them instead of sending them a notice.
Alright.
This has been a good year for...
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, along with a request of, can we have updated GIS maps that show where the treatments actually occur?
Yeah, we can give you aerial block shows where they're at.
That'd be wonderful. I don't know if you want to make it district-specific or county-wide?
No, we're just gonna do it county-wide, just so you can see where it is. It'll be cut sheets, so you can zoom.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Motion was made by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Harris. All say, everybody agree?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion moved.
That's it.
Business for our district.
Maybe it's Commissioner Wills that makes these meetings so long. He's the only one that left, and we always do that. Man. So, update on the training situations real quick. The Glades Training Center is moving along very rapidly. Glades County School Board has reached a deal with FSW to do some training for teachers there. Teachers that are struggling with getting some certain parts of teacher certifications exam passed, separate, totally separate. The Glades County School Board is also working, again, I debated you last time, but I want you to know that it's continuing to move forward with regards to ITech. ITech is going for a job growth grant through DEO, and they are working through that. Henry County wrote a letter of support, School Board letter of support. You have something to add?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, forgive me for interrupting your time. Madam Chair, to the point of the ITech support letter, there's actually two letters that the county has gone ahead and executed in advance of this meeting due to timing. I would just like the board to give me the approval that the chair was able to sign these letters of support for Education Improvement Task Force, grants for vocational training for the ITech piece, and then another for the Henry County and Henry County School Board application for vocational training as well. There's two letters.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be two more to come as well, so if y'all don't mind, if we don't, I know we have to have it in a motion, but I think we ought to give the county manager the authority to act and sign those letters on our behalf of support, not obligation.
Just put all letters.
Well, as it refers to vocational training grants, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Training, job growth grant.
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second it.
Motion moved. Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Don't laugh.
You did. No, I ain't laughing. You did good. It passed. That's what I wanted to happen. So, it's moving forward, and we expect, we expect that hopefully that grant will come through. We got, we got good vibes that it will. Along the same lines, we've also got the Henry County, and our staff is working very diligently to work toward a first responder, EMS, fire, law enforcement, training grant as well. And some of our staff also was very kind and forththought, thoughtful enough to help introduce and bring some folks in that's working on one out of the Benida Springs area that covers our area. And so I was graciously invited to a meeting last week with Ms. Ketchy from the city of LaBelle and some of our staff, and so they also have a little bit of arm over some training in our area. And so there's another layer that we think will help with some training with folks. And I'm also working with a group out of Palm Beach County that's doing the Senate Bill 10 money still, and so that'll probably be where the next letter will come from, one of the next requests that we have. So, a lot of stuff happening, a lot of stuff in the hopper. That timeline's getting very narrow and coming fairly quickly, so hopefully we can have some good news to report on that over the next 30 to 60 days.
Have they negotiated a date for the teachers yet, the starting date? I know the last time we talked about it, they said this year, but have they negotiated when they, the training for them?
For...
For the teacher certification.
Oh, yeah, they're starting this year. They're starting, I believe they're gonna start this fall or in the spring, I believe.
For the FGCU process?
Yes, that's right.
I think that'll be this fall, actually.
Yeah, I think this, they've advertised it, so I think they're out there. And it's through FGCU, so it's, it's a pretty, pretty easy transition. It's bring professor, bring, you know, said material. So it's not like there's a lot of setup to it, nor equipment, so. And earlier, Commissioner Turner made this statement, he loved us, and we didn't say we love you back. I want to make sure we show the love back, otherwise, so that's all.
Thanks for your report. Commissioner Harris?
LaBelle Airport received another grant, $769,137.
Is that in your district?
Yeah.
Oh.
You don't have to pay that back, do you, Barbara, when you spend it?
Pardon me?
Oh, all she heard was pay back.
And I think there's more coming in there, Shane.
Yes, sir, there's more coming. I just got notified by FAA. They're gonna be overnight and a grant offer to us, and that project will start real soon.
Take it.
How much do we have to pay out?
Well, we'll do it slowly, but it's a million-dollar project.
So he started out, we'll start slowly.
Better start real slow. Better call me, better call me before you start.
No matches, DOT, FAA, DOT funded. I don't recall us having a match, but it's FAA, DOT. We spend it and we seek reimbursement.
We don't do matches.
Better call me before you start.
Yes, ma'am.
Three minutes.
Did they say three minutes? Commissioner Turner?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't say that.
Shane, I just need to, I need to get an update from you on if y'all have been able to shoot anything out of a flag hole with some of the drainage issues that we're having on the frontside swells that the county's responsible for.
No, sir, we have not had a chance to.
Do you have a timeline?
Week after Labor Day?
Week after Labor Day.
Try to do it Labor Day weekend. Not Labor Week, but...
Following.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, that was really it from your perspective. Mark, on the foreclosure process associated with code enforcement, well, before we do that, before I have that discussion, can we have an update on the 14 cases that went before? Was it the judge or a special magistrate? How did that all?
It went before the judge. There was, forgive me, just a quick moment to pull up that report unless Ms. Imblich has that off the top of her head. We saw out of the 14 cases, I believe, 13 of them received judgment, two were dismissed.
Two were dismissed?
Two were dismissed. Of the remaining balance, fines were levied, no additional time was given. So we had much better batting average this time going before the court. That goes to the cooperation of the county attorney along with our code enforcement staff.
Having you judge?
Not yet. First of all, I can't claim any credit for the good day they had there. The code enforcement staff went on their own and I was not part of that.
But that's, that's a first in itself. Code enforcement staff is not usually...
Oh, they usually. I rarely go.
No, no, code enforcement staff always attends?
Yes.
Okay. But they've never been, they've never had, so if two were dismissed, does that mean the other 12 were...
12 received fines and were given date certain to have their properties claimed.
That's a, that's a much higher percentage, isn't it?
Much higher batting average. We have another, I believe, 12 to 15 that are slated to go this month, September coming up for a quarter year's...
I had 13, but okay, 12 to 15, you're covering your bases there. That'll be September the 15th?
I believe so.
Okay.
And to that, has any commissioner received any blowback? Anybody calling saying, these darn code enforcement, anything? Number one.
We also are putting the finishing touches on a code enforcement activity report from May through July to show how the new worst of the worst strategy has been played out in terms of proactive involvement versus reactive involvement, cases open versus cases closed, and to give you a little bit more detail of how they're operating in terms of community outreach while they're going through the various cases, and to give you the actual addresses and before and after pictures of the 25 cases that were selected for that quarter.
Can I ask, just for your clarification, the cases that were dismissed were due to compliance that occurred right before the hearing.
Good.
So, that was, that was positive. And, and I need to remind you all of what I said at the last meeting, or asked at the last meeting, was that we are looking for community resources to help those folks that can't afford or are in a dire situation, that can't fix up their homes when they get a code case and we see that there's an issue, or that our code enforcement officers are out there talking to them. They try to find out what's the, what their issues are with not being able to comply. We want to be able to provide them with resource, community resources that may be able to help them, whether it's...
Are you ready to go? So, so if said church or group called and said, hey, we're here, we want to help, what can we go do?
Yeah, that's the kind of, what I'm looking for, like churches and nonprofits. We, we have the agency information.
Right.
But we're looking for other organizations that we're not aware of, that...
But do you have your end ready? So if I called you tomorrow, are you ready? You're gonna say, hey, here's the address, go put skirting on it or whatever? Is that what you're...
Well, we don't have a list of those folks at this point, but we would.
Okay.
But that's, that's what we, we need that.
We, well, we can do that readily. It's just that we haven't, it hasn't come together.
Well, show us what that need is.
Yeah.
Send it out.
Mowing. This lot needs to be mowed or whatever.
Yeah, let us know, is it, are you talking 10, or are you talking 100 people county-wide? And is the hardship, you know, if we could have a little bit of background on that hardship as well, not to be prying, but to be able to share that with said entity that wants to get out there and engage.
Right. Understood. And that's what our intent is, to be able to do that. I can't say that we could start immediately tomorrow. We're still, I still need to get the information on the resources.
I'm not gonna ask you again until the second meeting in September. If you, but if you could have that list by then, that would be wonderful.
I'm not sure I'll be here for that meeting.
Oh, boy.
I won't be here for the first one, but the reason why I ask is, as it moves into, the reason why I ask is as it moves into great weather, those, you know, those community agencies want to, want to start to really get out and pour sweat equity into it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Barring a hurricane, so. Because, you know, you know, we had FEMA that was here that was gonna save the world.
Yeah.
And, and I think that they struggled because they don't know anybody, you know? And they don't, that's where the gap occurs in our community, is the constituent that needs it doesn't know the right agency, the agency doesn't know the constituents out there.
Yeah, and I don't know that it was really FEMA that was here to save the world. They were...
Oh, sorry, it was the promised zone. But there's about 13 different entities that are gonna save everything that have done nothing. So, the county sometimes gets rolled up in that as well. So, we're trying to do something, but we just can't, so.
The list will help.
Yeah, the list will help tremendously.
We'll do that.
Because you don't know who, who really can afford it, but the county have helped, because I think I had a couple of...
I mean, Ms. Rhoda knows, Ms. Rhoda knows when people, in my opinion, Wanda Rhoda knows, and other code enforcement people know, deputies know, when somebody doesn't have two nickels to rub together.
Right.
And/or they're playing the system.
Yes.
You know, they're a bad actor, or they really have a hardship.
Right. And we ran into an example of that with, we were holding out on some CDBG dollars for a replacement home, and when we finally got the information from the family, they actually made way more money than they had alluded to. And, and we're out, the income was more than what we could support with the CDBG, because it's, it's a low-income program.
Yes, ma'am.
But anyway, yes, we will pursue this and keep you posted.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Imblich.
Thank you, Ms. Imblich.
Ms. Imblich, before you go, I think you might want to help in this conversation. Mark, what, what is the process of the foreclosure status as it relates to the county and our ability to move forward with that?
Well, first, we need to identify the cases that are most suited for it, and so that involves several factors. It's not just that they got a lien. I mean, a lien that's $150, even if it is three years old, isn't worth foreclosing on. This is an example, an extreme example of something that's not worth the time and effort.
Yes, sir.
Contrasted with a higher lien, you know, thousands of dollars, okay, that's, makes it a candidate, but what's the, what's the ownership?
What's the threshold? What's the ownership?
Yeah, are they carrying their taxes? If not, are there tax certificates that have been bought by a private party? Because to me, a property that has a private party holding tax certificates, they're gonna call it up for auction, and there's gonna be an auction held, and it's probably gonna be sold, probably, if it's a private one, to a private party who will then own it, a new private party, and who, the lien will still be there.
The lien will still be there.
And so, to me, an owner who's coming in and buying a property at auction, probably would want to pay off a lien to clean up the title. They may not, and if they don't, we can still, we can take action against them, but I think we ought to allow the new owner to come on the scene. You also have concerns with, you know, these are properties that had problems, you know, they had...
And/or multiple problems for multiple years.
Right. And some of the problems, though, may mean, may be contamination, maybe. We want to make sure we don't foreclose on a property and become the proud owner of a waste dump, so we need to evaluate the nature of what's happened there. Then you've also, there's one other factor that I had in my list. I kind of came up with a list of considerations that I wanted staff to look into for it. Can't remember it. But anyway, staff sent me two cases that they thought were candidates. One wasn't, really wasn't, the lien hasn't even been recorded yet, so that's really not even a foreclosure. So, the other one they sent me, we looked into it and found there's, it's valued at like $19,000, the land is, and there's three years of delinquent taxes, all held with privately held tax certificates. So to me, we ought to let those tax certificate holders take their stab at it before we go through a foreclosure. That's just my personal opinion.
We'll continue to look at opportunities, though, on properties.
Yeah.
So they don't have to pay the lien against it?
No, they only have to pay the taxes, the governmental, the tax bills, they've got to pay. They don't have to pay the liens, but the liens don't go away. The liens remain.
Eventually, somebody's gonna get stuck with the liens.
No, what's gonna happen is eventually, somebody's gonna come into this board again and say, oh, guys, I just, I need you to forgive these liens, and code enforcement has worked their tail off for years sometimes, and, and we're looking at anywhere from, I'm gonna say, a low estimate, I think it was $168,000 in liens, if memory serves me correctly, but it's been a few months now when we looked at that last sheet, and we're not taking any action on that. Mark doesn't have time to do it. Okay, hire outside counsel. No, no, I'm not, I didn't say that either. I didn't say that you said that. I said, if Mark were to give us that excuse, then go hire an outside counsel and move it off his docket, and then let outside counsel apply accordingly and put his hourly rate on there, and that's something that goes on the bill that said human has to pay for as well whenever the process unfolds. But for us to have years of revenues built up and not be taking action on that, I'm I'm telling you, as good as I'm sitting here, as good as any of us are sitting here, just like fourteen of them went before a judge, two were dismissed because people went into compliance, I'm hoping that twelve of them, they were given time certain, you're going to be able to show us pictures that show things that are moving in the right direction? I'm telling you, one or two, six max, are going to go through this process and then it will reverberate throughout the county. Now, Henry County's actually taking action instead of just putting blank words that mean nothing on paper and having rules and regulations that no one actually makes you follow. That's the way it is today.
So when they buy the land, can we make them pay the lien?
We're not gonna. We, we've proven time and time again, we're not going to do that.
And we do.
Yeah, we can do it if we have the gumption to sit here and say, you have to pay that lien, said human.
One correction I can make to what I was saying about the two cases they sent, the